Republicans on the Hamlin County Commission vote to increase your will tax. Hello and welcome to the Charles Cook Podcast. The focus of this podcast is local state issues here in the state of Tennessee. You can follow my podcast on Facebook, YouTube, Rumble, Spotify, iHeart Radio, Google Podcasts, tune in. And Alexa, just search for the Charles Cook Podcast. So just follow and subscribe on any of those platforms and you'll be notified when I upload new content. For a new podcast, the best place to find those links is on my podcast webpage. At charlescookpodcast.buzzsprout.com. You can contact me at charlescookpodcast@gmail.com. All right, so let's get into what's going on here in Hamlin County. And this probably will affect some of the other county counties. That have will taxes and property tax increases coming up this year. So I want to talk about what's going on here and maybe you can apply this in your county as well. So here in Hamlin County, our county government is 100% controlled by Republicans. Basically, you can't get elected in a Hamlin County if you don't have an R beside your name. I think we do have one independent on the school board. Other than that, everyone in this county is a Republican. So our Hamlin County Commission, 11 of the 12, I mean 11 of the 14 county commissioners. Voted to increase the the will tax here in Hamlin County by $23. Which would bring a price of registering your vehicle here in Hamlin County from a regular tag. From $56 to $79. And that vote took place on, I believe, August the 24th and they will have a second vote. I think it's on September the 21st to to pass it for sure with the second reading. So I want to share the screen here and share a screenshot. With with you of the voting board. So this is the voting board at that county commission meeting. As you can see, the folks that voted for it, well, you had Commissioner Bobby Hahn, who made the motion. To for this and then Commissioner Debbie Ahern, who seconded the motion. And then you had Huntsman, Ahern, Doty, Reed, Richardson, Walker, Long, Cutshaw, Stan Harville, Bobby Hahn and Tim Horner all vote for the increase on the 20 cent $23 increase on the will tax. And you had three commissioners that voted no on it and that would been Lee Smith, Howe and Green. So I will stop sharing that, come back here. So you see, that was the voting screen, that's how the folks voted in this and now I'm against the the increase and I spoke against that at the commission meeting. And called this so-called Republican Party out because we, as a party, the Republicans are supposed to be low taxes and small government. And if we see that on the state and local level here in Tennessee, we know that's not true. They talk a good game, but they don't. And as I told them at the county commission meeting, I don't want to ever hear you talk about tax and spend Democrats. When you are doing what you're doing. Sure, that wasn't popular, but and may not be popular on this podcast, but the facts are, I want to just tell you the truth. It's the facts. And so the truth is hard to live with sometimes, but the Bible says the truth will set you free. So why do we need a a increase here in in Hamlin County of the will tax to pave roads? That's what they say. This $23 is going to be earmarked to go for. Well, number one, they cannot earmark anything. They can tell you that it's going to go for that. Next year, they can change it for something else. So if they're going to tell you this is all going to be about paving roads. They're wrong. They cannot lock it in there. So if if the economy turns bad and they need to use it for the schools, they'll use it for the schools. So do not fall for this. I'll, well, I don't care what they do. I won't vote for that. You're only one vote on there and the rest of the commission can do that. So. But so here's my question. Why do we need the will tax? Last year, when Hamlin County Mayor Bill Britton, a Republican, run for reelection. We didn't get all this. We we got that, you know, with his experience and his and his leadership. You know, Hamlin County was good and you needed to have someone with experience in there. And I've got the video and I'm going to play it here. It's a little less than three minutes long, but I'm gonna let Mayor Britton tell you, you know, about our fund balance and then I'll come back and speak on that. So I'm going to share this with you. Let me bring this back. Hold on just a second. All right, so I'll click that one, click share.
Thanks, everyone, for coming tonight. It's to support candidates and support the election and to be involved in in this process. I'm Bill Britton and I'm the Hamlin County Mayor running for reelection in the May 3 primary. Let me list a few reasons why I'm the best candidate for this job and to continue in this position. One is I offer stability. I offer stability for our county in a time where we don't know what interest rates are doing or what gas prices are going to do or food prices are going to do or what the war in Ukraine is going to lead to. So I have 28 years of experience as Chris mentioned in county government, 16 years as your county trustee. And then 12 years as as county mayor so far. I know how county government works. It's complicated. And without the background of knowing how to maneuver through the maze of county government. It can take time to learn and there will be no learning curve with me. I've been there. I'm the president of the Tennessee Association of County Mayors. I work as a mentor for some county mayors throughout the state. Effective mayors have strong, working, trusting relationships. That's how you get things done, the way county government is structured. I have those relationships already built with the county commission, with the other county officials, with city councils, city government, a business and industry. I have those relationships and you have to have those. They're critical to get things done as as a county mayor. And county finances have been managed well. Don't let anybody fool you. We have the largest reserve that we've ever had as a county government. Our taxes are among the lowest in East Tennessee. We have a solid credit rating and our last financial audit was clean. Looking to the future, here's my priorities. One is to continue building the economy by building our workforce. It's critical to continue devoting more resources to road repair or road maintenance. We spend more now than we ever have, but it's not enough. To continue managing our county finances conservatively, but we also need to take a look at our pay plan to make sure that we hire, train and retain good employees. And to continue devoting more time and energy to the battle against drug abuse from three sides, treatment, prevention and law enforcement. So experienced leadership, proven results, that's what you'll get with Bill Britton as your county mayor. I ask for your vote and support in the May 3 primary. Thank you.
Okay, so there you have it. Largest reserve balance that we've ever had. A lot we need a tax increase. You know, finances are good. Don't let nobody fool you. That's what he told you. Don't let anybody tell you any difference. Largest reserve fund we've ever had. That's last year. When he was running for reelection. Now, a year later, after the election's over, we have people on the county commission. Who last year or year before last was voting to build a $100 million justice center. And said it could all be done and no taxes would have to be increased. And now here they are, after the election, voting to raise your will tax, to pave the roads. And that's one of the things, the constitutional conservative libertarian thinking people like myself. You know, when we talk about taxes and tax increases and stuff. Many of us call taxation theft. And I won't go go into a lot of that. But one of the things we always hear, well, Charles, if we don't have taxes, who's going to pave the roads? Well, we paying paying taxes and you're telling me the roads are not being paved, so you need more money for taxes. So pardon me if I don't fall for this, okay? Because you've been getting all these tax dollars anyway and you know, looking to shape the roads. So I'm going to talk about a few things here and show you why we should not. If we're a well-managed county, as he says we are, we shouldn't need a tax increase. Okay, all right. Several years back, I remember listening, going to work one morning and listening to Supertalk 92.9, I believe, out of the Tri-City area. And just so happened that morning, our president of the Marsh Town Area Chamber of Commerce was on a radio show, was on a talk show up there that morning and he was being interviewed by the person that was filling in and he was talking about Morris Town being the economic hub of the Lakeway area. And that's the surrounding counties around Morris Town and Hamlin County. And, you know, talking about all the shopping that we had here, the restaurants, the, you know, the workforce that we had here, our jobs, our industry. And everyone coming from the counties that surrounded us, coming into Hamlin County, working, eating, spending their money here, buying, shopping, grocery shopping, whatever, coming here and spending their money, working and everything else. This was all coming in to Morris Town and Hamlin County. And I I grew that and we've had an explosion of economic growth here. And you can't deny it. That's true. And it's also true. So why? If all we have all this economic growth and we have people coming here to spend their money and giving us their tax dollars. Why do we need a tax increase? Okay. Hamlin County is the second smallest county in the state of Tennessee landmass wise. Okay? So square miles, we're the second smallest county in the state of Tennessee and there's 95 counties in the state of Tennessee. But we are 21st in population. So in that small county, we have a pretty good population for such a small county. Hamlin County has three industrial parks. So we have, you know, a lot of industry here for a county our size. And one thing I will say about the the population is our population is growing. If you drive through Morris Town and Hamlin County, you see apartment complexes being built. You see new subdivisions being built, you know, and that's pretty much the state of Tennessee. So in in Hamlin County, in 20, in the year 2000, we had 58,000, a little over 58,000 population residents here. In 2010, that was, we were right around 62,000, 63 to 5 in 2010. And this year, we're above 65,000 people. So our population is growing here. So that means more people coming here, they're living here, they're paying property tax. And I'll discuss that in a minute for those who say, well, if they're renting, they're not paying property tax. Yes, they are. And they're paying property tax and they're paying sales tax, will tax and everything else. So if your population is growing here, your will tax and property tax and everything's going up. So we've increased the population here by over 7,000 people. And, you know, and it continues to grow. We see more and more, more new buildings going up, new subdivisions and apartment complexes and stuff. But not only here in Hamlin County, but look at the counties that surround us. They have increased population and as I said, so many of those are coming here to work, shop and eat here as well. So not only is our population in Hamlin County and Morris Town growing. But so is the population in that Lakeway area where we are the economic hub, according to the Chamber of Commerce. So keep that in mind. We have a lot of revenue coming into Morris Town and the Hamlin County. Okay, so let's get back to the paving. Okay, well, at this meeting on August the 24th, the county trustee shows up and he talks about, well, we haven't, we haven't had a property tax increase. We've had two property tax increases in 17 years here in Hamlin County. And one, and then we also had a, how the state reappraises the property and stuff. And it went up 14% one year and the very next year, when the state increased theirs 14%, it means the county got more money because of the value of your property. And then the county turned around and increased property taxes another 14%. So in two years, they got 28%. Okay, so keep that in mind, but that's what the county trustee said, you know, and and blamed the sheriff, the former sheriff for causing the tax increase as well. So that's what he says. But they're talking about paving roads now and we need the money to pave the roads. Okay, so and back at Bill Haslam's second term as governor, the state legislature voted to increase the state gas tax. Many of y'all remember that. So let's talk about that because how does the state gas tax come into this, to play in this? So state tax monies are divided up between state, counties and cities by population. Okay, so the Tennessee has a 26 cent per gallon gas tax. All right, and the state gets 62% of that tax. While the county gets 25%. So so counties get 25% of that, of that gas tax money. And it is split up to the counties by population. And the cities get 13% of that. And it is split up with them by population. Okay? So although Hamlin County is the second smallest county in the state, you follow me? They have the 21st largest population in the state as far as counties. So even though you're one of the smallest, the the second smallest county in the state, you have the 21st largest population. So out of 95 counties, you're in the top third of population. So you're getting, you're in the top third of money from the state income, state gas tax coming back to the counties. So you're going to fall in the top third of that. And not only with that, you know, you have the city that's, you know, getting 13% of that as well. And that money's coming back to the city as well. So and you look at the city of Morris Town, which covers a lot of Hamlin County, which means that the county gas tax has to go you know, a lot less further. If you have the city that's covering a larger portion of the county, that's last roads that the county has to cover. I mean, paid as far as the county. That means the more the city annexes, the city is responsible for paving that. And then you have the state roads that come through Hamlin County and the city, like 11E and 160, those state roads that the state is responsible for paving. So the population in Morris Town is a little over 31,000. So basically, almost half of your population in Hamlin County is living inside the city limits of of Morris Town. So you know, that's something to think about there. When these, when they have to pave these roads, the county doesn't have as much responsibility to pave here in Hamlin County. Versus a county like Granger County or Cock County or Hawkins County or Hancock County, you know, we have a larger city limits here, which decreases the amount of county roads. So keep that in mind. So now where's our, where's our will tax money going? Where's our state tax money going? It's coming back on the gas tax. You know, if we have, if we have the second smallest county versus, you know, these larger counties, which do not have as large municipal governments that take part in the paving. I don't see the, I don't see where the money's going here and why we're having so much issue. I think the question needs to be to our county commissioners, where's the money going? How's that money being used? How is that state gas tax money being used? Is it supposed, it is supposed to be used for road maintenance and new roads? And, you know, paving and stuff, road maintenance. So is it going for paving the roads or is it going for buying trash trucks or what? Is it going to the general fund? What is it being used for? Is it being used to buy patrol cars for the sheriff department? And I'm not suggesting that. I'm just saying this is what we need to be asking. And why are we not putting that money into a fund? An enterprise fund to pave roads and make sure that it goes for that. This is what, you know, people need to be asking and people need to understand, you know, what we're looking at here. Now, so many people say, well, you know, this is just a $23 a year tax increase and you know, that's, that's, that's all. You know, I'm sure you can afford $23. Well, you know, maybe I can't. But it's my money and just because they're on the county commission does not mean they're entitled to it. I work for my money. You work for yours. And just because you work for your money, doesn't mean the people who serve in government are entitled to your money. Most people who work for a living work the first six months of their year, of the year, just to pay the taxes that they have to pay every year. Now, think about that. Think about all the taxes you pay. From your cell phone bills to internet bills to your property taxes, income taxes, state taxes and everything else. That's a lot of money. Half of your income is going to pay taxes. And then they think they're entitled to another $23. But it's not just the $23 for the county. As I said, nearly half of the population live inside the city limits. And look at the tax increases and the rate increase, increases that we've had in the city in the last several years. Our garbage tax, and I call it a tax because I don't, I do not get the option of selecting who I want to do garbage business with to pick up my garbage. They say it's a fee. No, if it's a fee, then I get to select who I do business with. If you mandate your business on me, that's a tax. So the garbage tax, we had a 33% increase in our garbage bill this year, our garbage tax. We had a 25 cent on 100 property tax increase in the city to build a community center. And other taxes, property taxes before that. So with the population, half of the population of Hamlin County being inside the city limits. We're getting hit every, every time we turn around. So, you know, saying, well, this is just $23. No, it's not. It's money every year. On top of what we're already paying and you say that we have to pay taxes so we can have roads. And our roads is terrible shape now. Because you didn't spend your tax dollars, you didn't spend the tax dollars license. That's what I say to the county commission and the mayor. So these are the questions that we need to ask them. You know, with the county so small and with the population that we have, all the revenue that we have here, our economy that we have here with three industrial parks, all of the industry that we have here. People coming in here to Hamlin County and to Morris Town to spend their money, all that tax money coming in. Why are we in this shape? And you heard the mayor on the video that I played you. And you should have heard it. If you, if you're watching the video, you could have seen it. So this is the question, what's going on with our money? If you're telling us that we're in great financial shape, we have the largest reserves we've ever had. Why do we need a tax increase? And that's why, that's where you need to be calling and why you need to be calling and emailing your county reps, county commissioners and ask them, why did you vote for this? Why are you not asking these questions? And they're going to give you all kinds of reasons. Well, Charles Cook is wrong. He don't understand. He don't get it. He's not on the commission. I get it. There's you can't have it both ways. You can't holler and yell that we are the economic hub of the Lakeway area. We have all this great economy and everything else and take credit for that when, and then turn around and say, well, no, that's not the way it really works. Somebody's lying. And it's not me. All you have to do is do a little bit of research. And one of the other things that I want to throw in here before I close this out is before, when we had this will tax issue and it was put on, you know, that they put this will tax on us, it was only supposed to be for so long. And then people got tired of it and said, okay, we need to do away with this. And they said, oh, we gotta have it. We gotta have it. Let's put it on the ballot and see what the people say. And they put it on the ballot and what they did is they run around saying, well, it's a fair tax. It's a fair tax. That means everybody has to pay it. And I'll never forget it. They said, oh, we got all these Hispanic people coming here. It's a way of making them pay theirs because they don't pay taxes. At least this way, they have to pay for it. And they lied. I don't care what you think. Facts are, people come here, I don't care if they're legal or illegal. Whether you like it or not, they pay taxes. If they go to Walmart, they pay taxes. If they go to the grocery store, they pay taxes. One way or the other, if they buy gas, they pay taxes. If they rent, they pay taxes. They may not pay it in their If they rent, they pay taxes. They may not pay it in their uh pay a property tax bill like we get every year, but the person who is renting the property to them pays property taxes on where they're renting. And a lot of those places pay commercial taxes, not just residential taxes. So don't let these people say, well, we have to do is, this is the way to make the illegals pay their taxes. Wrong. They pay their taxes. You might not like that, but like I said, I mean, I, I'm just gonna tell you facts. They pay taxes. So so don't let them, don't let them use that as a justification to increase the wheel tax or even have a wheel tax. Everybody pays taxes. You go to the grocery store, you do it. You buy gas, you pay taxes. You rent, you pay taxes. If you buy a property, you pay, you pay taxes. So I want you to think about this. Uh the next meeting is uh September the twenty-first at the county courthouse at five P M. You need to show up. You need to let these people know that you don't agree with them taking more money out of your pocket to do what they should have already been doing in the first place. And you need to be asking these people, where's our money going? And make them do the research. Don't let them sit there and and let the mayor and the county trustee sit and tell them this and that, and then they, they say, okay, well, this is what the mayor said. This is what the county trustee said. They need to be asking these hard questions and getting answers. Okay? All right, I appreciate it. Y'all have a great evening. Have a great holiday, great Labor Day holiday. God bless you. And we'll see you on the next podcast. Bye-bye.